No, no, don't you read up to me.
What's the big news?
What's the big news?
Kell, which wore their. I mean Biden crossed.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Look at my dad. I understand that too.
Rescue parties come.
I can understand.
Good evening, good evening and happy new year. Glad that uh loving the excitement and the energy of everyone. I think everyone's glad to be back. I think we took a long break from uh missing our meeting, our last meeting in December. So uh we're excited for now. Hopefully we stay that way throughout the year. I look forward to a great year. Again, this is our first committee of the whole meeting for 2023. Uh January the ninth, it is approximately 5:01 PM. Uh we started our first minute late, first meeting late, not because of me, uh but because. We're still uh just, I just wanted everybody to have a moment to talk and uh say happy new year and be excited. And Mr. West was still moving around setting up, so. Uh we're excited to be here. Uh inter manager Varney, we'll turn it over to you now for our MetroNet uh presentation.
Ken Hunter's been working closely with the MetroNet people. I think we met them back in the spring for the first time and we've been working together. We're ready, ready to get going, so I'm gonna hand off to Ken.
Yeah, I'll make a quick remark, thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Uh we have a representative here from MetroNet today who are heavily involved in what will be coming up here in the next couple of months when they start work on the construction of their new fiber optic service for residences and businesses throughout the city. So I'm gonna now turn it over to Telly Whitfield, who is their government relations, their vice president for government relations, and he will be making a presentation and be here also answering questions.
Good evening, mayor and council. How are y'all doing today? I have to thank Kenneth for the introduction, but also for the promotion. Thank you much, I appreciate it. Uh my name's Telly Whitfield. Um I am the government affairs director for MetroNet here in this mid Atlantic region, which would cover North Carolina and Virginia. Uh I am pleased to be here. Uh I thank you for the generosity of time. Um if you saw the presentation that was loaded into the agenda packet, I know you saw 29 slides. I do not plan to go thoroughly over 29 slides. It's my understanding that you have four other agenda items tonight and I want to be respectful of time. Um secondly, I want to just uh acknowledge why we're here. I have with me my, oh thing, there you go. Uh my peers Marshall Quarles, who's with me, who will be the project director for this market. I also have with me Kelly Parker, who works on construction communications. Uh we're really excited to be here. Why is MetroNet here? Because we're prepared to present a private investment of multimillion dollars into Rocky Mountain in this community. Uh we are a very large organization that exciting to continue to grow, particularly here in North Carolina. Um what's really interesting for me is about four months ago, I was probably sitting in seats like Elton back there. Um good to see you again, I've seen you in a while. I was the assistant city manager um for the city of Fayetteville. Fayetteville is actually one of the markets that MetroNet is building out. And about four years ago, I was introduced to MetroNet. Uh what we are is a 100% fiber to the home broadband community uh or company. And um when Fayette, when, when MetroNet came to Fayetteville, and I'll go ahead and give the number, the conversation went like this. We're ready to invest $70 million of private investment in your community. And how many people remember Jerry Maguire movie? They had me at hello. So now I had to figure out, how do we get to the journey to yes? Uh we understand that this is a vital component for many things in a community, but we also know that there's a process to go through. So today, what I'd like to do is kind of introduce you to the organization, walk you through what we're gonna try to do here in this community, and we'll have an opportunity to open up for, for questions and answers. So again, MetroNet was established in 2005. We are the largest independent, independently owned 100% fiber optic company in the United States. We provide fiber to the premise. As Kenneth mentioned, that includes residents as well as business entities and government entities as well. We call ourselves a, a fiber company that also does, a fiber internet company that also does other things like phone, and we'll talk a little bit more about uh streaming uh against linear, linear uh cable communications as well. Currently, we're in over 250 communities in 16 states. Very soon, it will be 17 states, um as we'll be adding Texas. And here in North Carolina, we're in 25, 26 different communities, including some of the larger communities that I identified here, Fayetteville, Greenville, Jacksonville, and Hickory. So why fiber? There's multiple reasons, reasons why fiber. Number one, meet the demand, the demand of your residents, the quality of life. With everyone now knowing that the internet is the core, technology is the core of how we do our work, how we live, how we play. It's really important that we have reliable, fast internet in our community. Secondly, we believe that with MetroNet and the fiber that we bring into the community, we also jumpstart competition. We recognize that we, we know that there are legacy providers that are in the community. We think that we have a very, very competitive, better product to bring to the community that also means that will increase uh quality of life and, and better service delivery for all um as we move forward. Secondly, why fiber? Fiber is transformational. We do know that fiber drives economic development. The fiber network in a community um helps engage with others who want to come into the community. It also means that we want to invest additionally with those that are already here in the business community. You can have greater output and efficiency, and obviously you have a more resilient uh economy. It also is a future proof. What I'd like to say is fiber is not only the future, fiber is now. And we know coming through this pandemic situation, when we have, my wife is an educator, we talked about education a little bit um over there. My wife is an educator. We understand coming through this pandemic and having to work, work from home and have education from home, asynchronous learning, things of that nature. It was really important and imperative to have technology so that people can have access information. The reason why MetroNet believes we're unique is because we have the opportunity to bring a multi gig service into this community. And not only is it multi gig and fast, but it's fast symmetrical, which means your up speed and your down speed is the same. And that's very unique in some of the products that are actually in the community right now. The other reason that we're, we believe that we're unique is that we're here today. It's all about partnerships. Um as you may know with telecommunications, there's an opportunity to go ahead and build in a community, but we'd actually like to do it in the partnership, so it's a win-win scenario, scenario with the communities that we serve. So what I'd like to do just briefly is, this is the road to gigabyte speed, if we could say, but it's also really an outline for what this presentation's about. We start with partnerships. We also over communicate as best as possible. Then we'll have some construction and we'll talk about our construction process a little bit, and then restoration and finally release. So I am in the government affairs. Uh what we like to say is we're at the tip of the spear. Uh before Marshall can do his work in outside construction, uh we actually have to have the markets. And what government affairs does is, we really, I love this slide because it talks about the triangle. The triangle between those that are actually building the market, constructing the fiber network, the city that's interested and wants to have continued quality of life improvements in their community, and where we sit is government affairs. And all those different um items that we actually do, I like the two. Um the second one there that talks about making sure that we have production, problem solving and predictability in our process, and then finally to get to the finish line, to get to the finish line. As I said, I was in local government public management for over 25 years. And one of the things I always talked about was, what is a successful project? A successful project to me is a completed project. Understand that there'll be competency in doing so, but it's gonna be efficient, effective, and we want to make sure that we get to the time to market. It doesn't make any sense to talk about, we want to bring fiber into the community and then 10 years later, you're like, Telly, where's the fiber? Right? We want to make sure that we have a very efficient process where we actually do the construction here in this community to get to the market where you have residents, businesses, and potentially the government that's now interested and lit up with gigabyte speed, gigabit speed. So again, I talked about the partnership, it's around transparency and accountability, which includes keeping us accountable. We'll talk a little bit more about that. Uh we know that when we're in construction, Ken and I, we've been, we've been in meetings all this afternoon. Uh we talked about this, we recognize that uh constructions build this size, this magnitude, probably hasn't happened in multiple communities since the original cable telecommunications days, which was 40, 50 years ago. Right? So it's gonna be a challenge and it's gonna be a larger understanding for many people in the residence, uh our residents. I actually went through this process again in the city of Fayetteville. We have a, a market that had over 55,000 passes that went through. That's households, businesses, and so forth that it went past. That's a lot of construction in a community of 210,000 people. So we want to make sure that we are communicating not only forward, but also when inevitably, there may be some challenges that happen. We recognize that. Um a colleague of mine says all the time that human beings sometimes do human being things. Sometimes machines go awry, but we also know that we have to fix those and we have good stewardship on with our communities. Real briefly, this is just says that we recognize that the, the industry recognizes MetroNet as a quality organization. One of the things I do want to quickly highlight though, is it talks about our top speeds. Um top three fastest internet providers nationwide, top three fastest fiber provider nationwide, number one fastest internet provider in two states recognized. So pre-construction, that's kind of where we are right now. Pre-construction includes looking at the partnership with the community. I'm here, we're here today. Looking at a poll attachment agreement, which we'd like to thank um the council um for looking at the staff to really doing their due diligence and actually um ratifying that poll attachment agreement back in the late summer. And then we're looking at what the initial build design would look like, and that's what Marshall and his team will do. So moving from that pre-construction timeline into what residential communication looks like. We have a four or five pronged approach in, in reaching out to our residents. The PR activity, the public relations activity starts around this timeline. When the council says we're excited to have MetroNet into our community, then that's a, a great opportunity to do marketing and exposure to the larger community to say, MetroNet will be here. We're excited to have MetroNet and what this service can do for this community. Once we get into defining what the, the actual, um the, the build looks like, the design looks like, the map of what we're gonna go to, we have um mailed out letters that will go to the residents. They go out about 45 days in advance to say, MetroNet is in your area. At some point, MetroNet's gonna be working in your area. Will be working in the easements throughout the city. And we wanted to acknowledge that it's also the first opportunity that we have for residents if they are interested to sign up for service. After that, we, as we get closer to actually going into the community, we provide postcards specifically with a time and date that says that we're gonna be on your street. And then we have individual yard signs that will post when we're right around the corner, ready to go. And then finally, for ingress and ingress into the communities, we want to have larger signs that say, hey, please recognize that MetroNet will be in the community and here's what we're doing. And with all those different signs have our information, our phone numbers, our website, et cetera. This is just an example of what the letter looks like. It identifies MetroNet. It talks about when we're gonna be in the community and talks about working in the right of way in, in the public easements. And the postcards will look similar to this. And then the yard signs are like yard signs from um those, those of us who have landscaping services and things like that, that they'll actually post in your front yard. And then finally, we'll have larger signs that will be um adjacent to uh major neighborhoods and thoroughfares. So construction, again, very, if you think about construction with fiber and many of us have seen um construction proj, proj, projects in, in various different places. We follow, fiber follows power. So if it's aerial in your community, typically, typically, we'll be aerial, we'll be on poles. If your power's underground, typically we'll go underground. Now, Marshall's gonna, has an opportunity to talk a little bit more specific about that as we actually look at uh the community in more specifics to see where there's opportunities to do one or the other. Our initial thought would be that this community is probably 80% aerial. We, we actually do the project in what we call LCPs, which are small geographic neighborhood areas, basically about 300 to 500 homes and businesses. Um and that's how we kind of work through the process. We, we also recognize that as the, the project moves forward, construction grows, there'll be multiple crews that will be throughout the city. Um so a, as, as we scale this, there's a probability of having up to, I know at one point in Fayetteville, we had almost 30 crews that were throughout the, out the community. And we also have a process where Marshall and his team have tremendous supervision and technology around where those crews are. Talking about the partnerships, we also let the community know, the, the, the city staff leadership, and if the council's interested as well, we'll let them know through a street sheet where exactly we're gonna do construction during that particular time. Everyone that will be working with MetroNet either as a MetroNet um staff person or as a contract um staff person will have easily identified information either um on their vehicles, but also they'll have picture badges, safety vests, you know, all PPE that will have MetroNet logo on them. And one of the unique things we'll talk about a little bit later is around with our ground construction when we do go underground, that many of you are very familiar with utility pedestals. One of the things that MetroNet tries not to do is populate communities with more pedestals. Um so we actually go underground, 100% flush mounted um terminals. So real briefly, as we introduce the project into the community, we'll also go live with a construction website. The website will actually show the breakdown of the LCPs so that you can actually see where we are in, currently in construction, or if we've actually completed, completed that area, um and actually let that area ready to go for service. Um you have an opportunity to ask your construction questions during that time. It's also an opportunity to engage with us that if you have electronic fencing, or if you have some irrigation systems, you can call us and let us know so that we can actually mark that and be very prepared uh when we go into your area. Um responsiveness is very important. I think another tremendous value of MetroNet is our customer service. Uh we pride ourselves in our customer service, including a MetroNet uh metric of 99% plus of response rate within 24 hours. Um restoration is gonna be very important, but again, we recognize that this is a construction project and construction projects can be messy, but we're gonna do the best we can. And, and that's what we stand behind and that's one of the things that Kelly does tremendously is ensure that we are very responsive to the community. In addition to the outward facing approach of engaging with the website, we have monthly meetings with leadership and those that will be working internally with um in the city on the project. Um there we talked about what's the pace of the project, um how, uh where, where are some of the challenges that we may have had, um either with some of the crews potentially, or if we have some outstanding restoration work that we need to deal with. Um we do that on a monthly basis. We can either do it virtually or we have it in person. In addition, Marshall and his team work on a daily basis um with your uh electric uh community, your energy resources department. And we started doing that even today because we had a meeting earlier um this afternoon, right in the same room. One of the things that MetroNet has also been able to do is partner with the local municipality on some education. Um again, being in local government, I recognize that connectivity is very important, um having sidewalks throughout communities. Sidewalks also do another thing. Sometimes it's the, it's, it's the perfect line of demarcation for the right of way. Right? A lot of people, um a lot of residents actually don't understand easements and right of ways. Um so when we have communities, particularly communities that don't have sidewalks, you know, a lot of folks will have, you know, their petunias and things right there, all the way up to the curb cut. Well, that's, that's in the right of way. Um so it may happen where that gets taken down, but one of the things that we do with restoration is we will restore back um to where um it was in the original existence. So what we've partnered with as many local municipalities would like to do kind of an education campaign. Again, it's been 50 years, it's been several decades since we've had something at this intense um and as a, as far as a construction project across a community. So to have something that we've posted, this is actually some of these examples that we have here um are from New Bern. New Bern has done a tremendous job, not only on their Facebook, um and having a presence talking about MetroNet, but also as a link to their website to just educate the, the, the public around um what are the utility markings? Um how do we locate utilities? Um where infrastructure is, what's the restoration project, uh process? And of course, yes, this is an easement that you have behind your, your yard here. Again, restoration, we pride ourselves in trying to have restoration within 24 to 48 hours when possible. We do restore as we build, which is another reason why we have those LCPs and we try to stay geographically focused so that we can have crews as we're moving forward. We have crews that can go back and restore. Now, post-construction, you heard me talk a little bit uh earlier about the pedestals. This middle piece right here is a great example of, I'm sure you've seen them all over the community, those pedestals. What we have here, what we call is flower pots, which are the smaller um circular terminals right there that are actually flipped opposite direction, so they go down instead of going up. Um and then what uh we call these are bolts, they're larger bolts, uh the, the bolts are about what every?
Seventeen by 24 by 18.
And how many feet are they?
They're about 17 inches. 36 inches.
So those are the, those are the things that for MetroNet, um we realize that the value of, of a community, we also recognize that there's a, as we're building something, there's a return on the investment, right? We're a private, we're a private for-profit company. Um but also um for us to go into a community, it doesn't make any sense for us to mess up a community and then ask them for the service, right? Um and be our, one of our subscribers. So it really makes sense for us to put the community back in a better place. In addition, this would be fiber on a pole. Uh we're working through that process too with make ready work, et cetera. Um and, and making sure that we are attaching to poles as, as Marshall referenced, um potentially 80% of this build would be aerial, and so a lot of services community. Real briefly, I wanted to talk about the direct sales program here in Rocky Mountain. Um as a strategy, again, um we're building a market because we recognize that this would be a very good market, not only for MetroNet, but also for Rocky Mountain. The asset that we're bringing in this community with 100% fiber, we think is a value. In order to get to our sales, our strategy has a component of direct sales. Um we have found across the country that uh almost a third of our sales comes from direct sales in the community. But we're also very strategic and we don't want to be overbearing on a community. How many people have gone and, 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 and folks are knocking on your door, past the time that they're supposed to be knocking on the door, um or um, you know, continuing to pester neighbors. Um so we're trying to be very strategic and we do our market designations in two approaches. The pre-sales and then the connected passes. Connected passes would be when that mark, that area, the LCP is actually actively under construction, then we actually have our um sales associates that will be in that market. That being said, we do direct sales and contact in the community for 90 days. For 90 days. That's the first 30 days prior to final construction, about 30 days, 30 to 45 days afterwards, there will be a quiet time after 60 days of release. But we also recognize that we get a third of our sales during those 90 day periods. And then finally, in a lot of communities, again, here in North Carolina, there, they have various solicitation ordinances that we're very flexible and working out approaches when there are no solicitation um areas, particularly like HOAs and things of that nature as well. As far as our direct sales associates, our direct sales associates are vetted, um they are drug tested, um they are trained, they are screened, um they have background checks, and, and then we have a long onboarding process. In addition that for applicable solicitors permits, they will be obtaining them as well. And I wanted to show that all of our sales associates that would be in the market would actually have an ID, they'd have a, a business card, and they would be in MetroNet apparel. Finally, in doing some research on, on Rocky Mountain this market, we know that about 77% of our households, and I believe you have about 22,000 households in this community, um about 77% of the households in this community have current access to some type of internet service. That sounds great, but that means that almost a quarter of your community does not have access to internet service. Obviously, there's been a big push from the federal government side around expanding broadband access. In addition, this would be fiber on a pole. We're working through that process too with make-ready work, et cetera, and making sure that we are attaching to poles, as Marshall referenced, potentially 80% of this build would be aerial, so a lot of the community. Real briefly, I wanted to talk about the direct sales program here in Rocky Mount. As a strategy, again, we're building a market because we recognize that this would be a very good market, not only for Metronet, but also for Rocky Mount. The asset that we're bringing into this community with 100% fiber, we think is of value. In order to get to our sales, our strategy has a component of direct sales. We have found across the country that almost a third of our sales comes from direct sales in the community. But we're also very strategic, and we don't want to be overbearing on a community. How many people have gone and folks are knocking on your door past the time that they're supposed to be knocking on the door, or, you know, continuing to pester neighbors? So we're trying to be very strategic, and we do our market designations in two approaches, the pre-sales and then the connected passes. Connected passes would be when that market, that area, the LCP, is actually actively under construction, then we actually have our sales associates that will be in that market. That being said, we do direct sales and contact in the community for 90 days, for 90 days. That's the first 30 days prior to final construction, about 30 days, 30 to 45 days afterwards, there will be a quiet time after 60 days of release. But we also recognize that we get a third of our sales during those 90-day periods. And then finally, in a lot of communities, again, here in North Carolina, they have various solicitation ordinances that we're very flexible and working out approaches when there are no solicitation areas, particularly like HOAs and things of that nature as well. As far as our direct sales associates, our direct sales associates are vetted, they are drug tested, they are trained, they are screened, they have background checks, and then we have a long onboarding process. In addition, that for applicable solicitor's permits, they will be obtaining them as well. And I wanted to show that all of our sales associates that would be in the market would actually have an ID, they'd have a business card, and they would be in Metronet apparel. Finally, in doing some research on Rocky Mount in this market, we know that about 77% of our households, and I believe you have about 22,000 households in this community, about 77% of the households in this community have current access to some type of internet service. That sounds great, but that means that almost a quarter of your community does not have access to internet service. Obviously, there's been a big push from the federal government side around expanding broadband access. Metronet is a participant in the Affordable Connectivity Program. The Affordable Connectivity Program allows households that are eligible a credit up to $30 a month for their internet service. One of our services, our price points for one of our services, and again, I believe, and you can take me at my word, but I believe that we have a very strong, a very strong service that we're providing at, at $60 of a price point. So that right there would be cutting it in half for many of the community. To be eligible for that program, essentially, you're talking about those that are at about 200% of the federal poverty line. We're talking about those that have any, have received any federal benefits, or if they're on free and reduced lunch, someone in that household is on free and reduced lunch, then they're eligible for the program. So just my quick math, and I was a social science major, but my quick math says that very quickly, we could probably capture through the Affordable Connectivity Program at least 5,000 households. Now, I also acknowledge this, I'm a former social services person, human services person. We recognize that only about a quarter to a third of individuals who are eligible for services typically take those services. So there's a disconnect there that we will continue to work, work with the community going forward. There is a website there, the Affordable Connectivity Program, that you can go to and get more information, and I'd be more than happy to talk offline about that. Lastly, I talked about video streaming. How many of us have traditional linear cable still? How many of us have about 1,400 apps that we don't even know that we're paying for every month? Right. That's the movement in this community. So when Metronet first came out with our fiber internet, we also had a cable connection, a linear cable, a streaming connection to it, but we recognize that all of our new subscribers, only 3% of them were taking video streaming. We're taking our cabling service. So we're transitioning out of that business, it doesn't make that much sense for us, but what does make sense is making a partnership with many of the apps that we already have. So if you do move forward with a Metronet service subscription, you can still get those connections to your DirecTV, your YouTube, your Hulu, et cetera. And the nice thing that I'm really excited about as well is, our sales team has started to train so that when people call and say that we want to cut the cord, they'll be able to help them do that process. Finally, I talked about the three reasons why we think Metronet makes sense here in this community. Obviously, from our side, we're very interested in building out Rocky Mount. We think it's going to be an outstanding win-win scenario for this community, as well as others across the state of North Carolina. We're committed to being here. We're committed to being here. And this, these are just examples of some of the things that we've done throughout the country in connecting with the community and having a face in the community. Obviously, we have folks that, moving forward, we'd love for them to be a part of the community and even being here. Marshall mentioned earlier in the sidebar conversation, he's very familiar with Rocky Mount because he's been here, he worships here. This is a part of the community, we want to be a part of the community as well. So with that, I'll end right there. Again, I have my two colleagues and I that work here to answer any questions for you. I apologize if I went over my allotted time, which I don't know what my allotted time was, but I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, but we're excited to have you, to be a part of this community. What I've left you with at your table is just a little bit of information about Metronet again, and also within that, there's a reference sheet that talks about just three different communities that we've already built out throughout the country, including the place that I spent five years serving with the City of Fayetteville. So we'd be more than happy to talk to you. We're looking forward to a long-term engagement as we move forward over the next couple of years with this construction project, but also to see how we can continue to make the city of Rocky Mount an even better place to be. I truly believe that fiber, and we know this, is actually a proven data point, that fiber in your community actually increases property value, and that's something that I think we're all, we'd be excited about.
Dr. Whitfield, thank you so much for your presentation. I'm sure we'll have questions. Councilman Blackwell has already stated, he has, I have a few myself, I will allow Councilman Blackwell and then Councilman Harris.
Thank you, Dr. Whitfield. I'm very excited about the possibility of our bringing fast internet. So, a couple of questions, and maybe I missed it. When construction began, well, as soon as a neighborhood is completed, or the infrastructure's completed, then that neighborhood will be able to come on, so we're not waiting for the whole city to get wired, and then, and then are we being judicious about Edgecombe-Nash, Nash, Edgecombe, so we have activity happening on both sides of our city simultaneously?
Absolutely. I'm actually going to bring Marshall up for part of that conversation, but yes, to the essence of what you're asking about is, when we complete an LCP and it's connected, and I'll let Marshall talk a little bit more about that, we light it up, and it's available for service. So we do not wait for the entire build out.
Last question, is it cost? Is cost comparable, more expensive, less expensive than what currently?
We're comparable to the market, we just have a better service.
Okay.
Y'all answer customer service phone calls.
Yes, we do.
To resolution, I just thank you for calling.
I've heard stories, yes.
So, I'm Marshall. I'll be the face you'll probably see the most, I'll be in the market. So he mentioned earlier, I worship here. I played for James Galyard, who I know is part of the state senate, they were that nature, so I've played for him. I'm also a pastor. However, you'll see my face the vast majority of the time. When it comes to building, like you mentioned, certain local areas, we call it, we have a hut site, that is our main distribution center where we build our fiber, where it does main distribution through our mainline backbone of fiber. So if you live on the northern side of Rocky Mount, we build simultaneously on the ring so that when we can touch every LCP localized in that area, so you don't have to wait for the entire market to be built. For example, if you lived in a community where there was only 250 homes, we would turn up just the 250 homes as we continue to build, and as our backbones continue to be built, and it feeds back to our hut site, you'll have service along with everyone else it connects to. As far as the, I'm sorry, as far as the answering phone calls on my card, is my personal cellphone. So at 8 o'clock at night, 10 o'clock at night, for me, it doesn't matter because I'm here all the time. Our main warehouse is going to be right on 1629 South Wesleyan Boulevard. So it'll be right there, which is directly down the street from where I worship. So I'm here every week, every Sunday, and I do a ride-through, and I make sure that I engineer what needs to change as far as our aerials are underground, and then I continue to build out, and then we send out the communications that are asked.
So sir, I'll give you an example. In Fayetteville, where I've previously worked, we have 55, what we call passes, households, businesses, governments, institutions that we'll pass by with the fiber. 55,000 passes in that community. We are about 28,000 or so that have already been released for service, so they're not waiting for the phone.
Yes, my question was, will you be working in area simultaneously with poles distribution as well as underground distribution?
Yes.
And do you know where you're going to be starting, or have you got that far along yet for us to kind of get a general idea where it's going to begin?
Yes, so he mentioned we categorize the local area as an LCP. That to us, just to kind of throw it out, just because you're going to continue to hear, it's called Rocky Mount, it's called NC Rocky Mount 27. That is over near Old Mill, Old Mill Road, or right near the highway, that's where we're starting all of our aerial build. There's very little underground. I had maps, and I know I provided it to them, and I'll be happy to get those to you, but there are maps that actually show you how much aerial to underground is actually in a certain location, and those communications go out to the city every, anytime we do any builds.
Councilman Blackwell's questioning, because I don't recall here in a day, but when y'all will begin actually starting?
We're in the process right now of solidifying the pole attachments. Once we're able to solidify that, we're looking to do it within the next two months. Spring area is when we're trying to target. We already have the localized area that we want to beta test to run the market, to begin the market, and then we build out and that goes out at simultaneously.
So two months?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilman Jordan?
Yes, do you do any local hiring?
Yes. Local hiring? Yes, yes, yes.
And you've actually already done some of that. I have about four local residents that work under me currently, so they're residents of Rocky Mount. And their position is called an outside plant field supervisor, so I have about four of them right now.
What is the process, and how do they get in contact? If you had somebody to refer.
I'm sorry.
What is the process, and who would they get in contact?
I have some cards with me tonight that I'll be more than happy to leave with you, leave with the entire group, if you have any interest in the community. In addition, that on our website that we'll go live with very soon, you'll have an opportunity to engage with the community, with the company for.
Dr. Whitfield, thank you again. My best friend is a, he's out of Silicon Valley, so he heard about this over the holidays, and I mean, blew my phone up excited, saying, hey, Rocky Mount's on its way, we've got a fiber, fiber company coming to the city. So excited to have you guys here, but a couple of tech questions I have, and then a couple of human sort of personnel questions. Can the city capitalize on using your conduits to resolve connectivity issues that the city cannot reach in some of our underserved areas?
Absolutely. So when we talked about the partnership earlier, I think that's where the conversation, that's why we're here as well. We're going to do the best we can to alleviate some of those challenges. That's a question that we always get in every community, and when I was on that side of the table, that's where I was as well. What we'll try to do is do the best we can and leverage what resources we can, and look at whatever Marshall comes up with, not just Marshall, but the team around the initial build, we can also look at subsequent builds as well to develop in various communities. In addition, I think that's really the big piece around the Affordable Connectivity Program as well. The better off, I can, I can say this from my experiences in other communities, the better off we can get to with the actual interest in the community, the better off it is for me to go back and sell to my folks to say, we need to build this right now.
Got you. Thank you. Will you guys have a citizen fact line, frequently asked question line for calls that can be directed to you pre and post-construction, to avoid influx of calls to the city?
Absolutely. So somewhere in there, when we talked about the website, the website is also an opportunity that we can engage with the residents, and they can ask questions, and we will be responsive to them as well. And then we talked about somewhere in there, and I don't know where I had it in the presentation, but a website that, for example, New Bern did, that they listed FAQs as well. Particularly, if you know there's going to be some specific questions to come up throughout the community, we can work and partner, you know, Ken and I, we've connected very well to make sure that we can capture those and do what we can to alleviate that. What we don't want to happen is for you to get saturated with calls.
Got you.
Absolutely not.
Yeah, I was going to, I was going to say, because some of our constituents, they're looking to have internet and be, you know, learn how to be internet, more internet compatible, but for those that aren't online, is there a number? We have a large constituent base of elderly constituents, which is my other question. Do you have an educational component for those that may be looking to utilize your fiber connection, especially for some of our elder constituents?
That's actually, that's a great point that you raised, and I don't know if we have something that we can just pull off the shelf, but there's something that we can definitely work together with the city to accommodate.
And we've also already had discussions with Metronet, and Business and Collection Services will be involved in these discussions going forward, where we're going to make sure that their staff is aware of what is going on, because we realize that chances are, there are going to be a lot of calls that will be coming in to their operation, just as a matter of, because it's a utility, and so we are going to be working on that as well. So, and the goal is going to be to transfer as many of those calls to Metronet as possible, so that they can handle it properly, but we are certainly aware that when this occurs, that there's going to be, there's going to be calls all over the board, and that we will need to be able to respond effectively to them.
And I could add just a little bit to that, because I see it even now on a regular basis. Prior to some of the markets that I currently oversee, which is Greenville, Wannaville, Aiden, Ann Simpson, and now Rocky Mount, what I've seen from my field ops, they've gone out to customers' homes. When we do our, we do door tagging to let customers know, hey, you know, when we're here, you know, we're going to excavate the grass, we want to make sure your grass is restored properly, but let's keep it watered and things like that. When we do our door tagging, and we do all of our community communications with the yard darts and things like that, there's contacts on that yard dart that they can call in, and you can either create a footprint ticket, which comes to me directly via email, I get them all night and every day, like you can call at midnight for a concern, and it immediately comes to my email. So they can make those calls as well.
Thank you. Mayor, and then Councilman Blackwell.
Okay. So my only question is, how long do you anticipate before the entirety of the city of Rocky Mount's covered? We start in a couple of months, and hopefully you're done five months later, right? Yeah, I mean, I understand the reality, but the reality, but there are a lot of people that are going to want to know, where do I fall out, that staging, right?
I don't honestly want to put my foot in the mouth, because...
We'll give them a wide range.
A wide range would be anywhere between a year and a year and a half, and it could be shorter and it could be longer, only because we run into different circumstances where it rains, it snows partially, you know, we have colder days, you know, equipment breakdowns and things of that nature. So things slow down, and sometimes things pick up, and we want to make sure that anytime we're doing anything where it's causing the city any harm, or, you know, hey, there's so many cars, we want to make sure that we keep that communication there. But again, it really depends on, you know, the environment more so.
I was just looking for a commitment of 100% of the city within some reasonable period of time. So thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to revisit my first set of questions, okay, because I think I got about three of them answered, but I have one big one hanging out. So you said you're starting at Old Mill. When we had the first presentation from the team from Metronet that came to us, we talked about the dynamic of Edgecombe and Nash. We also talked about the dynamic of well-developed communities and communities that are being developed or redeveloped. So Old Mill is a great place to begin because you got access to multiple types of communities. You got Willerford Town not too far away, you got Little Raleigh, South Rocky Mount. I didn't hear anything about Edgecombe, so I just want to know timetable, how long does it take to build out a community? And are you being conscientious and intentional about ensuring that you're, that you're building on both Nash and Edgecombe simultaneously?
Then that's a question.
I'd like an answer.
Yeah, so, so I'm going to answer, and I'll admit, I'll answer partly on the answer, and then I'll make sure that I'll take that back to our team and then with Marshall to look at that and do that due diligence.
And Marshall, you should know, because you're from, right?
Right. And we did talk about this, and we've talked about multiple layers of ensuring that the communities are touched in various forms and fashions, but I want to just double-check to make sure that we have that Edgecombe and Nash perspective. When we talked earlier, I talked earlier with some of the team, and again, this is an initial build at this point, so we haven't fully designed the project out yet, but we do know just for, as one metric, would be that we wanted to make sure that all of the council districts are still represented as well. And so I don't know, doing the overlay of the geography of Edgecombe. Well, what, basically what it does is it looks at the diversity of the community as best as possible, it's a broad scope, and so I'd like to look at it again, if you could give me the opportunity to kind of do that research and come back through Ken, and come back with that answer to make sure that we've captured that. If we have not, then we'd be more than happy to kind of look in and see. This is part of what I guess my job would be, is to ensure that the elected officials and the executive leadership are comfortable moving forward, because we want to manage that expectation. And like, using the example... Um, and like using the example in Fayetteville, which was a, was a larger scale, um, project, we're at about, um, we're just over two years into that project there, and we're at fifty percent of the build out. So that kind of gives you an example, um, of moving forward, but, uh, Councilmember, that's a great question, and I'll be more than happy to get it back.
I think our our orientation was that you wouldn't de-build all the wealthy communities first.
Absolutely.
And then get to the communities with less resources last.
Correct. That is not the intention.
Okay.
That is not the intention.
Okay, so you're intentional then, I just wanna hear you.
Oh, absolutely.
You're intentional about building up inner-city communities simultaneously to build enough wealthier communities.
So, and and I'll go back and I'll take this personally, too. That's why I came on board. Um, the the way I take, say this again, working twenty-five years in five different municipalities in three different states, my job was to build community. And and now I have the opportunity to do that with transformational asset in fiber. And so we have to do that, and I love your word intentional, that's one of my favorite words as well, is to do that intentionally. I just don't have that that information for me right now, but we'll be more than happy to look for it.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. One thing that might help us see is, do you have any inner or outer loop maps, uh, that you guys are already using or utilizing?
Uh, yeah, I actually brought some in today, I, when we had our earlier meeting, um, I wasn't aware that I needed that, but I made sure I could definitely get those to you. We've already kind of laid them out with the full footprint of the of the build, and then you'll see where where all the placement is, uh, and how we're actually tying in to actually feed each home.
That might help us be able to gravitate around what your intentionality.
Yeah, absolutely.
But your your question also entails the timing of that, too, right? Understood.
Got you. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman, Council, I I did have one more question, Councilman Knight, uh, what is the day difference between the speed, um, of what you guys offer and the speed of, uh, Optum at the homes?
I have to tell you, it's night and day. We won't, um, I don't think you've ever, I don't know if you've seen, uh, you know, you have 5G now. It works in compatibility with 6G, where one bandwidth drops and then the other one kicks in to keep it going. You're not gonna see any speed difference, it doesn't matter the amount of, uh, devices you have on it. I think what Metronet is great about, and and it goes to our field ops, and I do it, too, I came from, I came from field tech. I came from crawling under the crawl spaces and in attics with spiders and, you know, I crawling up and going up gaffing, oh, I I've done it all. So one thing Metronet is really good about is letting the community know whether your devices are compatible. Most people get the services and they say, you know what you're gonna get, let's just hypothetical, throw arbitrary a number, you're gonna get a thousand mags, right? Your computer is not capable of handling a thousand mags, you have to have a new device. So Metronet is really good at letting you know what devices in your home will work on that. Internet works as as fast as your slowest device. Everyone in your household has an iPhone five or whatever, and somebody has a Nokia with the, with the light of antenna. It's only gonna work as fast as that Nokia. You have to make sure all of your devices are compatible with the speed in order to actually see it implemented in your home. And that's, Metronet is really good about making sure that you understand that in your household, paying for it, yeah, I mean, that's one thing. But it doesn't make sense if you're gonna call me every day and complain about your services not being fast enough.
Uh, yes, thank you for the presentation, and I think that's a very important question that Councilman Blackwell asked you earlier. And I think that we would need to, uh, hear back from you, I hope we would, uh, before we move forward. Uh, also, uh, from Greenville, I heard that, you know, you had some extensive problem with your, uh, contractors just doing the work. And so my question to Mr. Barney, are we gonna have a staff person to, uh, monitor or to be the person to, um, to make sure that things are going well here in Rocky Mountain, if if we move that way?
I think we'll have several people doing that. One of the things we're gonna need to do is, um, is to do locates. Uh, we have to work ahead of them and locate in in getting the pole attachment agreements. And then also, uh, locating it wherever they're gonna be working in the underground areas. So, uh, I think we're gonna end up being a, being married for a while.
And the last one with the, uh, when it comes to digging up people's yard, you know, had a lot of people concerned in other areas that you all have been in, so I guess you have, uh, learned from that challenge?
Absolutely.
Um, so here.
So I'll answer part of your first question as well. Uh, we have what's called an OSP field supervisor who monitors the crews that are out there every day. They're in charge of three separate crews, keep those crews localized to the certain areas. So, uh, if they're on Green Street, Apple Street, and Orange Street, we have them rotate to make sure those crews are doing what they're supposed to. One thing about me, I'm a very straightforward guy, I'll shoot you straight from the hip, I'm not gonna tolerate you doing things that we're not, you know, that does not represent what we are trying to do in the community. I've already kicked out a few, but at the end of the day, we try to make sure we do it right. I have contracts with local, um, and I've already actually done some of the work now with local landscapers. So when these guys are, they're here to dig, put it in the ground, and then they do a solid restoration, and they do really good. But in the instances that they don't, I call my landscaper, he comes out, he speaks to the customer, he makes sure the customer's happy with what they're gonna get, and then we get it taken care of. There's no cost to the customer, there's never any cost to the customer. We make sure all our traffic control is in the proper area, so that way any traffic that needs to be redirected and things like that, we do that. But those OSPs that report under me, they make sure they report to me if there's anybody doing things they're not supposed to, and they have the ability to shut them down immediately. So we we take care of that, and I've already hired four of the locals from Rocky Mountain right now. They're in Greenville, they've been trained through Greenville as well as Fayetteville. So when we come to Greenville, excuse me, when we come to Rocky Mountain, they're already familiar with the area, so.
So you'll be the contact person if we have a problem?
Absolutely. My cell phone number's on the card. It doesn't go to, you're not gonna get a hotline, you're gonna get me every time.
I don't get you, we will find you.
You will have to, I'm always here.
Show up in place of work.
Can we get those calls?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing all the questions, uh, thank you so much, uh, Dr. Pastor and your team. Uh, thank you guys for for being being with us. Uh, we're excited about, uh, Metronet and the opportunities, um, and we're looking to work, work with you and work forward, um, on this implementation. Next up, idle fund invest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Idle fund investments, Ken Hunter. And Ken, after this one, you can just stay up.
Yes, sir. I just need to move, I just need to move, just change that slide.
Thank you all and good evening, uh, I guess, yeah, sorry, I'm sorry. Um, so this is something that we've been working on for a couple of months, and I am, uh, joined here tonight by Dan Kalus, who's a representative of Public Trust Advisors, who, uh, is here to talk about, uh, what they have presented to us, which is an opportunity for the investment of the city's idle funds. Uh, as we mentioned in the memo, uh, currently we have a little over ninety-six million dollars across all funds that are currently held in investment. And this is a possible way for us to improve the performance of those funds, uh, within the confines and limitations that we have as a municipality here in North Carolina. Uh, those, uh, our invested policy is actually established as an administrative policy three dash seven and conforms with North Carolina Journal statute one ninety, one not, one fifty-nine dash thirty. Um, it is a very conservative statute, uh, when you compare it to other states across the country, and it's consistent with the general philosophy in the investment of municipal and county funds in that the security of the fund is the highest priority. We wanna make sure that the money is available and 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 secure. So that helps us avoid capital loss, enables liquidity to cover all obligations. Now, what that also means obviously is that, uh, if you think of saver class investing, it's very similar to saver class investing. Typically, we do not have investments with maturities greater than thirty-six months, most of them are much lower than that, even they're very short-term, uh, investments. Uh, the investment authority by policy is granted to the city manager, uh, in terms of making adjustments with respect to how we invest those funds. The current practice, and this is basically been, there were basically two options that we had up until very recently. The first is to do it ourselves, and the fact of the matter is, when you look at the return, that would be cost prohibitive. It would, we would have to have a fund manager on staff that would be actively involved in buying and selling, there would be transaction fees. It really does not make sense for us to do it ourselves. So the way to do it is the utilization of what's known as a local government investment pool. And we have been, uh, pretty much since its founding, one hundred percent invested with our idle funds in an entity known as the North Carolina Capital Management Fund. It was established by the state in partnership with the state of North Carolina back in nineteen eighty-two. It is currently managed by Fidelity Investments. Um, what's important to note is that most, is that basically when it comes to what we can invest in per statute and per LGC reg, LGC requirements, is that we can pretty much invest in in very secure, short-term government or corporate investment vehicles. And up until two thousand and twenty, uh, NCCMT actually had two different pools. They had one that was purely government, involved basically federal, uh, treasury or federal agency debt, and they had a second one that was a mix of federal debt and as well as other vehicles like commercial paper. They closed the treasury and agents, the federal, the the private-sided fund in twenty twenty, uh, and only now invest in treasury and agency debt, and the portfolio mix is right there. Um, rates haven't, yields have improved, obviously, all of these investments, both private and public, uh, had very low yields for a very long period, for for significant period of time, especially because of COVID and how the Federal Reserve basically propped up those markets, uh, from twenty twenty until middle, until early last year. Uh, currently, their seven-day yield is four point one four percent, that was as of, uh, last week, and they have a management fee of sixteen basis points for the management of the fund. So what we have looked at is that, like I said, up until recently, that was really the only other option. That was the only local government investment pool that had been established in North Carolina. Uh, earlier this summer, I was approached by Mr. Kalus and his staff at Public Trust Advisors, and they brought us that they were going to establish a new local government investment pool, a second pool, uh, called the North Carolina Cooperative Liquid Asset Security System, or NC class. Uh, this is based on a model that they have used in several states across the country, uh, to provide support of two local governments, each one within a given state. It does have broader diversification than what we currently have, and the fact that it does have more investments in commercial paper. It also carries bank, uh, bank deposits and cash equivalents, and it has a, it's posted management fee is fifteen basis points. They have indicated that during the initial period, they will actually waive those, uh, management fees. This is a fund that is starting up, it will be established through an inter-local agreement, uh, and so we would be a party to that agreement, and during this initial ramp-up phase, those fees would be waived. Um, the advantages for us is that this will broad, this will broaden the diversification of our portfolio and allow us to once again enter into the, uh, commercial paper market, enable us to have higher-yield securities. In terms of liquidity availability, which we are obviously very important, very concerned about, because we wanna make sure the security of these funds, that availability is the same as what we currently have, and also, uh, based on the plan, it is already achieved a triple AM, it's already been pre-rated as a triple AM, which is the highest rating that you can get for an investment fund such as this. Currently, based on what they have planned as the investment portfolio, they could anticipate a yield at approximately four point five eight percent. So that's a, that's about forty basis points higher than what's currently being achieved by NCCMT. Um, in terms of risk, they're insignificant compared to what we currently are doing. This is simply creating competition in a market where there simply has not been competition for for an extended period of time. Um, our recommendation, which we will be presenting to you, uh, in probably about a month, would be to adopt a resolution that would allow us to authorize participation, and that would be in the formal, in the formation of the inter-local agreement. There are already two cities that have signed on to this, I mean, sorry, two local jurisdictions that have already signed on to it, Lincoln County and Hope Mills. There's a third jurisdiction, New Bern, who, uh, will be voting on it later this month. So, uh, we would be the fourth jurisdiction, uh, to join this fund. Uh, we would, of course, like to diversify some investment into this fund. As I said before, we have currently a little over ninety-six million dollars available, and so we would recommend transferring no more than ten percent. That would give us a chance to to see how it would go, and be able to compare it and monitor its performance to the NCCMT, and then going from there in accordance with our policy, then adjust the holdings as warranted. And again, the reason we would be looking at this is that interest revenue, is that interest earnings on these funds are a for, are a source of revenue across all of the funds that we have in the city, and so it is something that we're very aware of, because it does allow us to have additional money for city operations. We also just wanted to mention that there is a third option that's available that was established in twenty twenty-one, and this was solely established by Wake and Bunkum Counties. Other jurisdictions can participate by inter-local agreement. Uh, it's called the North Carolina Investment Pool, uh, consistent structure to what NC class is recommending, and it's also triple AM rated, and it currently has a seven-day yield slightly less than what NC class thinks they're gonna have of four point five percent. So that was what we wanted to share with you. Uh, we've provided some additional information in your package to provide some background on Public Trust Advisors and what this program would be. And again, Mr. Kalus is here to answer any questions you may have, so I'll go ahead and turn it over. And if, if any questions?
Thank you, all guys, so just, just get, just questions, no presentation?
No, just questions.
Okay, all right, appreciate it. Councilman, uh, Daughtry, and Councilman Harris.
Um, I I'm glad to know we do this, and I knew to a certain extent, but I didn't realize we, um, I just thought it might be in a CD at some someplace, so. So we only have two, two choices, and and I asked you earlier, so we only have two choices, and then the one most recent that you just described with, um, Bunkum and the other.
Yes.
So we can't go through the treasurer's office or anything of of that nature?
I am not aware, because I know that nobody else does that, so so we can, we can find out.
Okay, I'd like to know an answer to that. Um, and you talk about the management fee being waived, how long are you talking about waiving that for?
Uh, we wanna make sure that the fund has a nice diversified base of local government units throughout the state of North Carolina. So, as Ken very well articulated, this investment program is being created in any local government unit by state statute. So we're talking cities, counties, uh, public improvement districts, special districts, schools can invest in it. So, once we see a nice diversified base of, uh, initial investors, um, I would say, and from a competitive standpoint, so assets growing, we probably for the first year to two, the fee will be waived, if not in its entirety, uh, of a significant matter. Largely because I think that anytime you're starting something new, you want, you want a solid base of entities that, as Ken said, can try it out, they're comfortable with it, our service model, uh, everything with NC class is, it's fully transparent. All documents are posted on the NC class website for any, uh, local government or any, any of the public can look at it even.
Right.
So.
So we, so is there an option possibly to maybe reduce the time and then, but also reduce the basis points charge?
Yeah, the good news is the board, the Board of Trustees has full discretion on proposing, uh, the fees. As Ken mentioned, the fifteen is what's written through the, uh, the fund documents to be the maximum charge. So in some states, we manage about, we're investment advisor and fiduciary on about sixty billion dollars nationwide in eleven states. Um, I would say the majority of those funds, even ones that've been around for over a decade, the fees probably average around ten basis points.
Okay.
Because we recognize the net return is what a lot of the public entities are looking for. At the end of the day, they wanna make sure that they're getting the best safe return on the investment. So if we see that in North Carolina, uh, the competitive advantage is to have the fee closer to five basis points three, three years from now. The board, with our advice, will be saying, we should probably keep the fee pegged at five or two.
So in the presentation, it's saying sixty-two and a half percent of the diversifications in commercial paper. And in the slide before that one, it doesn't list commercial paper, which.
Which they're not invested in?
I understand, I I completely understand that. But, so the commercial paper is what, what, the sixty-two percent is what your fund is, correct?
Well, it, yeah, and it it moves. If we don't feel like the risk-adjusted return makes sense in commercial paper, then it might be, if the yield isn't there, it could be as low as zero percent. But we have the flexibility to go up to the percentage where it makes sense, where we're still diversified, but yet we're providing the best return for the fund.
So even back when commercial paper, my understanding, hurt a lot of people back in, what, two thousand and eight and?
We had zero. Yeah, we took our exposure to zero.
But that's a large exposure, when you, over here, you're looking at basically thirty percent, and over here, you've got sixty-two percent. So that's putting a lot of eggs in one basket.
It, it's an asset class, it's the CP issuers, there, it's a, it's a broad range of issuers.
So what do you invest in in that asset class?
We Coca-Cola, Procter and Gamble, General Electric, any A1, P1 issuer of CP. And so when we have the percentage of the total being sixty-two, it's diversified over all of the CP issuers.
So about, what about liquidity under stressful times?
Daily liquidity. Daily liquidity. Yep. We've never had a liquidity event in one of these funds that we operate.
Um.
So if a public entity invested today, they get, they gave their money out, the entire amount plus interest the next day.
So what's the return on investment as opposed to the yield?
Well, what we post is the actual one-day and seven-day effective yield, so that's the return on the investment. So we actually pay out, we compound the interest daily, so there's a daily factor, much like a money market fund that you all might use in your own personal investment portfolio for overnight, for cash, for a kind of a sweep component. So yeah, there's a, there's a calculation that we provide daily on what your interest is you receive that day.
So have you compared the two, the two on the same period of time?
We've, we've compared, there's, and, and we have compared on a seven, we've compared on a seven, and we, prior to bringing this back, we can compare it even further in terms of looking at it across multiple, across multiple metrics to see how they perform comparatively. But yes, we have.
Okay, well, that would be great to say. There are my initials. I've, I've got several more, and like I mentioned to both of you, I think it would be a good, if, if I could get around and just ask some, some questions instead of taking off the whole committee, the whole, for, for that.
Uh, Councilman Daughtry's had some of my questions, and thanks for your answers. The value, let's just say, we put in $10 million, 10% of 96 million, but let's just say $10 million. If we had $10 million January the 9th of 2022, and interest rates more than doubled since then, when I say interest rate, I'm a retired banker, so I look at the prime rate. Prime rate's gone from 3 1/4 to 7 1/2. Yield is one thing, how about the value of the portfolio?
Well, the value of the portfolio is, it's valued every day at a stable $1 net value. So, so as, from an accounting standpoint, you're only recording in interest, so the actual investment itself is valued pegged at $1. So your daily, your $10 million investment is $10 million today, plus whatever interest you earn overnight. But your initial investment is going to be what you put in, and then what you make on top of your.
And over the last 12 months, what's, what would have been the yield? We're looking at what it is right now for the last seven days. What is it for the last year?
Um, to use one of, we're in 11 states right now, so off the top of my head, I want to say that, I'll use Michigan or Florida, I want to say with the Fed raising rates as actively as they did since March, when it was basically 0.25. I want to say it's around a 1.6, 1.7 would be the, the 12-month, or 10-month yield. So we're, the fund is, it's a 60-day weighted average maturity, so it's really short. So it takes a while to catch up, but if you look at, like Ken showed, the portfolios we've had in existence for a long time, right now, their daily yield that had been around is a 4.5.
Yeah, yeah, sure, sure, sure.
So if you invest today, you're catching the 4.5. But a new fund, obviously, it would take it a little bit of time to, to get that.
And Mr. Harris, what would be the NCCMT? Do you know what the return has been for the last 12 months?
Uh, it's been close to what he just described, maybe a little less. We can go back there and look at the numbers and give you that information, based on the average, based on the average, on the average deposit, on the average holdings for the, for the last calendar year. We have that, I just, I haven't calculated, but we can, we can give you that information.
I mean, you got to come to the council anyway, another month, you say, so.
Right.
A lot of additional information can be provided to us before then.
Yes, sir.
So.
Right now, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you. So, thank you for coming. Can you tell us a little bit about your company?
Sure.
Just, we've looked at the product, but who are we working with?
Sure.
And, and why do, why do municipalities work with you? What is your, what is your portfolio?
Sure.
As far as size of the customers and what they're getting back?
Sure. So, Public Trust Advisors, which would be the investment advisor and administrator on NC class, we are a firm focused solely in working with public entities around the country on creating basically these overnight investment programs. So about $50 billion of the assets we manage for over 6,000 public entities nationwide are in these type of overnight programs. We have about another $11 billion in separately managed portfolios, which Ken alluded, the policy here allows for up to 36 months. So some entities want to work with us directly to say, hey, we've got some reserve funds that we want to take out further than overnight, we want to be invested maybe in the nine to 12 to 18-month space on an average maturity. So we do about $10 billion of that with, with other public entities. But our company solely focused on the public space, and we're fiduciaries, we're not brokers. An important point on this, on this type of program is that there's no fee for any public entity to invest in it. We don't charge ACH or wire fees to the entities for any money coming in and out. Now, the, the bank where you're sending the money might have some fees, but the fund itself and program does not charge fees to the public entity. So, our firm saw the value in doing this in that oftentimes, this really short overnight space, you're kind of hamstrung by what a bank's going to pay, or what CDs are going to pay, or like Ken said, going out and buying these securities yourself. So, we saw the value in creating a transparent, easy-to-understand type of vehicle for finance directors and city managers to, to do it. And our economy's a scale, in terms of how we go out and trade, we do a lot of, you think about it, we have $60 billion we're managing daily, so we can go out and do best execution with a lot of the largest broker-dealers in terms of securing these, or obtaining these securities for the portfolio.
And so our, our shortest time that we would invest with a strategy with you would be, how long?
Technically, it'd be overnight.
Okay. And then, so that, that depends upon how much cash we got sitting that we're not using, and what our goals are for the cash that we have, that we want to get more interest on, that we want to take a little bit further.
Absolutely. And there's, this program is set up to have no, no minimum requirements. So we have public entities in a lot of the other states that might say, well, we only want to have our idle funds in something like this for three months, right? We have some entities that move money even more dynamically throughout the course of a month. They might start off in a month with $9 million in it, but then mid-month, they might pull $5 million out and then come back in later. So, it's designed to give tremendous flexibility for folks like Peter and Ken and the team.
So our state law has adapted to the market to be able to participate in something that flexible and that fluid.
It's, it really hasn't changed, it's just that there are now other entities that are entering the market. The law itself hasn't changed. This is working with the laws it's been for a long time. What, what has happened is, and we've seen this in other markets in North Carolina, insurance being one of them, is that there are now companies that see that in general, North Carolina has been a little bit of a closed loop in terms of certain providers. And so what they're doing is they are trying to offer other options. And so, this is a, so they're, they're not, the law hasn't been changed, there hasn't been any situations. When we talked, when we were going through our discussions, we obviously talked to the LGs, we talked through the LGC, through the attorneys at Maguire Woods, who are involved in this, of course, we have experience with them. We, we wanted to make sure that, that everything was proper. We did a significant amount of vetting in the structure side of this to make sure that everything was where it needed to be. And, and, and we, and we did that. We certainly know that we need to answer some questions with respect to return and with return, but we will, we, we felt like this was a good option. The issue with that third fund was it seemed like it was only created to really serve two parties. You have to have a minimum of two parties to have an interlocal agreement. And so, they, they, they don't really market it, they, they, they'll let people join, but they don't really market, market it outward.
So where, where is the, where is the elected oversight of this? Do we just approve the total amount of the transfer, or how much we're going to, you know, invest with you, and then you all just sort of move money at your will, at your will? You know, how, how do we evaluate success?
So, so right, so right now, in this policy, honestly, the internal city policy honestly goes back to Mr. Kibbit's time. So, um, so I'm just, just to give you, say again? Sorry.
That's a long time.
Yeah, it's been a long time. So it is certainly, that's another matter that is certainly up for discussion internally. So basically, the city manager was given the authority at that time to manage investments. And the practice when I, since, since I've been here, was that was primarily handled by the Director of Finance in the state. And the way it is working currently is that we have our existing balance. Each month, the money that we receive from our local option sales tax goes into that account as a deposit, because we're continuing to deposit money into that fund. Obviously, we earn interest on a overnight basis. The, when we need money, and that only typically happens during the first half of the fiscal year because of the timing issues that exist between when we collect revenue, mostly from property taxes, and when we, when we spend money, there are times where we withdraw money. And so that, that does affect the balance. So it is a, so it's a very passive approach. It is entirely possible for us to look at how we approach it, and not only how we do as staff, but also the city, the, the council's role in that, to consider what are the other options available? And if that is something that, that council would like for us to, to look at, we certainly, we certainly will, and offer other suggestions, see what other jurisdictions are doing, see, see what, see what is going out there. We just, when this was presented, and I, I track interest earnings as a matter of revenue, I felt that it only made sense to see what we could do in terms of, to increase the revenue with the money that we had in a way that was consistent to how we're doing it.
Thank you.
What are the four municipalities that, that are in investment group?
Yes.
Same four, New Bern and?
Lincoln County.
Yep, resolutions have already been signed for NC class by Lincoln County, the Town of Hope Mills. As Ken mentioned, the City of New Bern has taken the resolution for approval on the 24th of January. City of Hickory is also evaluating it right now. And we've got a couple others. The City of Charlotte we approached, they were very interested in it. City of Raleigh, so we approached some of the biggest entities too, and the resounding feedback is we want to have another option. The good news about this program is no public entity is going to be forced to use it, but they can literally lay it next to any other, other options, even maybe old savings account that they get at a bank and they're only getting 2 1/2% on it. They could utilize this if they so choose, if the management of the, and the finance group sees it as being appropriate. But those are the counties and public entities right now, cities that have already signed off.
Question for the city manager. Should we be considering this now, or wait until we get a permanent finance director in place? Or I see it says risks are very insignificant, so.
I, I would be inclined for us to keep, keep evaluating this and, and go forward with it, if, if this is where the council would want to go. It appears to be a safe investment, appears to be well-managed. There is a, was it a Board of Trustees?
Yes.
Something that, that would, would have local representation on the Board of Trustees for this, for this entity, or the participating jurisdiction, so that we would, we should, I would think we would have some voice, some share of that. You have a new city manager coming on, and I hope, hope, hope that we'll have a new finance person come on who can, you know, take, take this over and, and operate it. I, I, I'm thinking we need to keep moving on, so that, because, because if we can make a little bit more money, then we, we, we need to do that.
How old the Board of Trustees selection?
The founding trustees, and the way the legal documents were crafted in the bylaws with Maguire Woods' assistance, is that there's, it only takes two to officially get North Carolina class launched. So we've already got the two, but we wanted to get three to start. So that initial Board of Trustees, they can decide. So again, it's not us deciding, it's, it's finance and local government representation on the board to decide when you add new members. The board can be as big as, it was written that it can be as big as 13 folks on it. But yeah, it's truly at the discretion of the, the local government board representation on the trustees on how often and how many new folks to add.
Councilman Jordan, the mayor, and Councilman Harris.
No, I'm good. I think my question was asked, and I was going to ask Ken, comparative of what we're doing now, what is the benefits of this?
Higher, if, based, once I confirm it, based on what we're seeing now, in present, in present terms, it is higher return in the future. We will take a look and see how the returns that this past year are under different circumstances. But the goal is to generate more money in interest that obviously would be used as revenue by the city, or available as revenue by the city.
My question was answered, it was just simply why the recommendation, but it's clearly it's a, it's a play to try to generate more income.
My quick question, you mentioned Charlotte and Raleigh. Are they using NCCMT entirely, or do you not?
Well, I'll speak Charlotte first. Charlotte actually is a big enough entity, they have about $1.1 billion in cash and cash equivalents, which are 90-day and under. They, they have folks on staff who actually go out and buy CP on their own. I think they've got about a $250 million commercial paper portfolio. They do use NCCMT for some of their monies. I think they might have 80 million to 100 of theirs, or at least the last half where I looked at, and when I talked to Teresa Smith there, I think. But they, they were really excited because although they like NCCMT, and it's a safe vehicle, overnight, stable net asset value investment, liquid, they wanted to have another option, and something that, like Ken mentioned, could provide a better yield at the same rate.
I think it'd be good that we have conversations with some of the larger interested cities.
Any other questions?
Thank you, gentlemen, so much for your time, for your expertise in this matter. I look forward to looking at this further. At this time, Ken, again, with our first quarter financial review, also our first quarter financial review from the Event Center staff.
Okay, thank you again, and good evening. We are here, and here's the report for first quarter, which is through July 1st of 2022 to September 30th of 2022. And if all goes well, next month, you will get the report for the second quarter. So we will have caught up, and we'll be back on track with where we should be in terms of quarterly reporting. With respect to our revenues, we are seeing a positive, a continuation of a positive direction that we saw last fiscal year as well. Actual local option sales tax is growing. It doesn't necessarily show when you look at the report because of timing matters that occur in the first three months in terms of transfers back from prior, in, in the prior fiscal year from the timing lag that there is in, in the receipt of sales tax revenues. But overall, it's growing, and I think I have a chart, you'll definitely explain that. We also have strong increases, I'm sorry, not in this chart, but what we have seen, what we saw so far with sales tax performance is that we're about 15% ahead of last year, which is actually above what we projected. So we're continuing to see that. The factors that are, that are prevalent are contributing to that. We also have seen significant increases in sales and service revenue. This includes solid waste, we, and also parks and recreation programs, which continue to ramp up, as well as the Event Center. We'll talk a little more about the Event Center here in a minute. Expenditures have gone up, but this was anticipated. Inflation is a reality. We've, of course, made significant pay increases in the last year that have, that have an effect, particularly when you compare the first quarter of last year to the first quarter of this year, because the changes we made started in the second quarter of fiscal '22. We have also increased our capital outlay. Most of that, particularly in the general fund, has been focused on equipment replacement, so that's had a significant role in our expenditures. But from the standpoint of what we look at in terms of the performance of the general fund, we really look at that operating ratio, which is revenues over expenditures. As you can see, for fiscal '23, it was at 0.821. If you look at fiscal '20, fiscal '21, that's pretty, it's, it's almost identical to '21. We were, we did get up to 0.979 in '22, but that was due to a lack of spending activity. We, we kind of held off on a bunch of expenditure activity in the first quarter. So this is kind of an anomaly. Our average, when you take these three years together, is 0.857. So we are in a comfortable position with where we would be. And, and the main contributor for why it is under one as opposed to over one is that we do not start collecting ad valorem tax revenues from, from real property or personal property until the second quarter, it pretty much happens then. So that number will flip to well over one after the end of the second quarter, at, at the start of the second. So that number will flip to well over one after the end of the second quarter, at, at the start of the second, at the end of the second quarter, and we'll also be in a strong position in the third quarter. From the enterprise fund perspective, uh, sales, both in electric and gas, are, in terms of dollar amount, is higher. There has been some increased usage, and especially as we've talked about in prior meetings with respect to gas. The price of gas is up, we have the PGA in place, and that has also contributed to our revenues, and that's helped on the, on that side, uh, adjust, adjust for and balance off the increase in wholesale gas costs that we've, that we've been dealing with this year. On the water and sewer side, sales are up in both. That is reflecting both increased usage, as well as the rate adjustments that you, that you approved for fiscal year 23. We also have continued to increase our capital project activity, which is very important to the maintaining and, and operations of our system. On the stormwater side, pretty basic with respect to revenues, they're meeting and slightly exceeding our expectations. And as you are aware, we have several planned significant capital projects, mainly the downtown project that are underway, and we're going to start incurring costs for those. We have planned for that, we are, we are working in that direction to, to be able to manage that. As we move forward through the remainder of the fiscal year, we should be able, on the revenue side, to finish 2023 in line with budgeted forecast, and we will obviously keep our expenditures below budget levels in total. The key, of course, for us is ad valorem taxes, uh, which are primarily collected in this, in the second quarter, so we'll have that information here very soon. And that is key with respect to revenues. We continue to monitor our expenditures because of the impact of inflation. Fuel's kind of been all over the place, it was high when we started the fiscal year, it went down, now it's starting to creep back up. We have other consumables across our funds that have challenges with respect to inflationary cost adjustments, and then there's capital equipment, because cap, those costs have gone up as well. Staff is currently working on the proposed CIP. This is for fiscal years 2024 to 2028, my apologies, it says 25. We have also started, uh, working with our departments on benchmark, on benchmarking data collection across, across all departments, and the budget development process for the upcoming fiscal year will begin later this month. So what I'd like to do now is talk about the event center performance, and I believe David is here. So David's here to answer any questions that y'all, that y'all may have after I do this brief overview. When it comes to the event center, what you're going to see here is kind of the start of a new report we're doing for this, and we will be looking at the information by quarter. We also have included, um, an operation summary of their operations for calendar year 2022, comparing it to how things went in calendar year 2021. It's important to note that when we look at the operations of the event center, the two things that we focus on are the net operating margin and the net total margin. The net operating margin is your revenues minus the cost of goods sold and the facility expenses. When we presented the pro forma to council prior to the construction of the event center, it was our intention that within five years, this number here, which is, which was budgeted this year at negative $647,370, would be a positive number. Due to COVID, we had to kind of extend that horizon, so what we have done is that we are in, that, and we talked about this during the fiscal year 2023 budget process, is that our goal is to reduce this loss in '24 and '25, and then it'd be a positive number in '26. So that would be end of kind of the extended five-year operational period, the first five-year operational period at the event center. There are other expenses, such as tax credit expenses, debt service and capital outlay, that are not part of operations, which provide you with the total margin, total, net, the net total margin. As you can see, our amended budget and the net operating margin just under 650, negative 650, and a net total margin of just under negative 4.3 million. For the first quarter of 2023, our net operating margin was negative 265,000. And a lot of this is due to the fact that the first three months of the fiscal year, that is kind of a soft operating period for the event center. Not as many volleyball and basketball tournaments going on, because it's more, they're more of winter and fall sports. Not as many other activities going on in indoor venues, it's, it's mostly an outdoor period of time. And so we, we, we anticipated this, and as you can see, we also don't make any debt service payments during the first quarter, those are made at the end of the calendar year and at the end of the fiscal year. So that's where the net total margin is only at $358,709. From an operational performance perspective, of course, we have here the comparisons for '21 and '22. Based on information that I believe David has also give, has also distributed elsewhere, total attendance in '22 was over 77,000, which is a 47% increase. Now, in react, so 2022 was really our first full year of operations post-COVID. So we're very, we're very fortunate to see that. The event center also tracks economic impact, now this is an estimate, but it's a, it's a calculated estimate, and it's just for 2022, it's under $15 million, which is a 64% increase over 2021. And this is the impact that is being felt by our hotels, our restaurants, and other businesses that are serving those who come to events, whatever, whatever they may be, throughout the year at the event center. In terms of what those events are, they hosted 21 major sporting events. They had seven concerts and major conferences, and then also an additional 223 additional rentals, including banquets, receptions, all kinds of things. So for total, over 250 events were held at the event center in 2022. So, uh, again, David is here to answer any questions that any of y'all may have, and, uh, be happy to turn it back over to the mayor of town.
Uh, Councilman Harris, Councilman Jordan.
Well, uh, thanks for your presentation. I'm, I'm interested in, when I look at budgets, I look at, or I like to look at actual costs or actual revenue versus budgeted costs and budgeted revenues. You don't have a column that, that I can figure it out, the way you do your percentages and all that, but like this, that's great. What are the actual budgeted revenues for, and I'm just not, event center, I'm talking about regular city operations too. You know, uh?
If you look at, if, if you look at the first page,
Yeah.
I'm sorry, the second page, the first, there, there's a, there's an adopted budget column and an amended budget column, and there's a, and there's a section for revenues and then expenditures.
But like for sales tax, I'm just going to use this. Where, where can I find the actual budgeted amount that we have budgeted through the first three months?
I see what you're saying.
Actual?
So what you want is quarterly, a quarter, a quarter, a quarterly, you want to see how we distribute the budget on a quarterly basis?
That's correct.
Okay, we can, we can do that, we have that information available, and we will share that with the Q2 report.
Thank you, I, that, that, I think that just, I could figure it out with your percentages, but that's too hard.
Thank you, Ken, definitely thank Dave, I've had the privilege to, uh, work with him there, thank you for the great work you're doing. If, and just for future growth projection, uh, we talked about the, uh, local investment. What projection would you say, if we had our own downtown lodging, what would be the impact that you would see, uh, in the downtown area?
I'm going to do the numbers real quick in my head. So let's say we were able to secure a 100 nights, I mean, a 100-room hotel, which I would assume would probably be around the range where we would be looking for to have a hotel to support for conferences and events at the event center. So you're looking at probably about 18,000, if it was at full capacity, 18,000. So that's five, so, so you drop capacity, you drop occupancy down, you'd probably be looking in their revenue, let's just say $4 million, four, four, four and a half million dollars just off hotel. Then you add another amount for other activities and incidentals and restaurant and conference space. Let's just say conceivably, we're talking about $7 million a year that that hotel was generating. So from a, so what would likely happen, and again, I want to be very careful, and we need to work these numbers up to kind of give them, to give a more official item. But in terms of economic impact, you have that seven, that $7 million, you would probably have as much, if not more, indirect and indirect economic impact outside of the hotel. And so obviously, that would have direct, that would have, you know, the amount of money spent, there would be a tax impact, there would be a jobs impact. Those would be things that would contribute to our local, to our downtown economically and to the city as a whole. So those are certainly things that we need to look at and will look at. I don't, unfortunately, I don't remember the last time we looked, from the last time we looked at it, but those, but that is just a rough conservative estimate of, of what would be available to us.
Appreciate that, Councilman Jordan. And, uh, how aggressively are we, um, really marketing and trying to approach, uh, hoteliers and, uh, individuals with, uh, parking to a match aspirations, because I, I think with numbers like this, whatever we can do to make the event center as successful as it can be, we could, that's the first question. Secondly, I know SFM, SFA, I think they changed the, the name, uh, maybe immersion. I know they are sports, um, based and focused, but what can we do to make the event center more marketable for, uh, concerts and concerts and that probably?
So, so let me, let me direct Mr. Varney to answer the, so let me give Mr. Varney the chance to answer the first part.
And then, yes.
Are you okay with that, Mr. Varney?
Well, the first part was, um, uh, what, what do we, what can we do to market, I guess, for a hotel? What we have just commissioned is a hotel feasibility study, looking for, um, sites in the downtown area, particularly on the Edgcombe side of the city, but hotel feasibility study for downtown. All we want to do is have a study, so then we can go around to whoever's in the hotel development business and say, hey, just, I hope the study's going to say that, uh, you know, that, that a hotel here downtown is, is going to be feasible and is what it looks like to us. So that's, that's, that's what we're trying to do on that.
I'll turn it over.
That should be done in about 90 days, maybe 75 days, something like that.
Turn it over to Dave.
So, to your question, so actually the company, the name out, these sports facilities company, but we run a number of venues that have like concert apparatuses, so I'll give you a good one. And, um, Patrick, who's the GM, he has a venue down in, um, Alabama. Have a 7,000-seat amphitheater outside, we have a, a bunch of other ones that, uh, they've just built or taken over to have a lot of concert, you know, use. The, the challenge of concerts, to, to be honest, it's not a challenge, like, we, we've done a lot of traction and we've seen growth there, that especially come out of COVID, we would expect, we do market harder. Where I have been, I would say, conservative and cautious there is on, we don't have a, a budget or mechanism set up for us to like pay for talent, right? So that's not my mission. And so what we do then is like what we do with the tournament, so, and, and just to explain, when they, I think this will help, the way the sales process works is when we reach out to them and we market, then we have, they have a conversation with our sales staff, based on time of year, uh, based on how many people, based on, you know, if it was another event, also, you know, fighting for that date. If at that time, you know, it works for both, then we negotiate, and we also do a lot of market study work, because the differences, I would say, with tournaments or even, uh, certain conferences or, or corporate events, people will come to us and be like, well, we went to so-and-so and we brought X amount of people. Well, we have good relationships, I have a lot of personal relationships, so I'll call the GM at the Grebel Convention Center. We'll call the people in Raleigh at the Raleigh Convention Center, or whatever, say, hey dude, have you had this person, how much do they pay? So we always know when we're talking to them exactly what they performed and what they've done. That allows us then to be able to haggle and negotiate, um, because they all pay rent. And so, and the other piece that's factored into that is the time of year with the floor. That gym floor is, uh, really expensive labor-wise to take up. And so what we've done, which have helped us on the numbers, the one thing we changed is in the first half of the year, we strategically focused on, we pushed tournaments, because that's tournament season. So for example, this past weekend, there was 80 teams, 17, 153 people that bought tickets at the door, uh, and then another 960 players and participants, right? So that's whenever you see us saying those numbers, just because we track them, like, we don't make them up because you have to pay or they have to register to get in. So from there, they pay us rent, and if we're, and that's a big money weekend. They, we keep all concessions, we keep all bar sales, we did $5,300 in parking sales this, uh, this past weekend. In addition to the deltas played at dinner that we had going on the same time in the ball run. So if somebody says, I want to have a concert, uh, that weekend, we're going to say, well, you're going to have to pay at least, you know, what would have covered us for that conference or that tournament? So, you know, we do have some, the, the one that sold out in April, he's coming back again. He, he pays for floor conversion. But if you want to do it at another time of the year, then they do it when we take up the floor in August, and that's where we're strategically, we've been pushing, that's when we want to do music events, because the floor is taken up, and then we can work with them better there. Another thing that also factors into it, uh, with concerts is when they're talking to us, we can't confidently tell them yet, because the market is growing, what, how many tickets they're going to sell. And I think that's probably the biggest misnomer, is not, so when the Raleigh Convention Center, or excuse me, when, uh, PNC, a good example, when they book a concert, that's not PNC's responsibility to sell the tickets for the concert. That's the promoter or the act's responsibility to sell the ticket. PNC's job is to put on the concert. So we help, and we do more than you would typically do for a venue, that, because we do understand this is a smaller market, it's new to the area, and so we push, and we do a lot of marketing billboards and that type of thing. So that's part of it, we're, we're working on it, and, and we have a lot, we have a lot of people call, but typically what we'll get is, hey, I want to have a concert on this day, but they don't have an act already. So if, if you don't have an act, then we don't know exactly, you know, how many tickets you're going to sell, we don't have a rough gauge. What we did see last year, now we've got some good people that we have a relationship with, who are doing more, and we're getting a lot of calls now for festivals. We actually think that's a really good model for the area, uh, and so, and, but we're, we do a lot of marketing work out of them, out of the, uh, the, the market as far as we go out of state. We are in Raleigh and Durham a lot, our marketing manager actually serves on the board now, State, it's a corporate association that has allowed us to get a lot of that non-sporting business that, uh, has really been helping for us during the weekend, and they all see it. If that makes sense.
Councilman, but? So how many folks are asking for more hotel spaces? Are hard getting hotels in Rocky Mount?
So, to be a hundred percent honest, that comes up all the time, uh, and especially, actually, it comes up the most with corporate events. And if you think about it, it's because when you go to most conferences, the hotel is typically there. And so we, what we do now, and, uh, Mr. Varney and, and Mr. Daniels have been really helpful in us being creative with transit and, you know, helping, uh, them with the experience piece, because I, I do want to stress that I'm not selling this facility as much as I'm selling the experience. Once we sell the facility, they know the facility is there. Like, once we market that, they're already in conversation with us. The sale comes in as what their overall experience, we're competing against communities, right? So, so I'll give you a good example, we pulled a, a tournament last year from Durham. And when I say pulled it, they still had signs the day of the tournament that said, welcome to Durham, because they didn't have time to change. The, the sign is that we have them again this year, but things are a little bit more accessible there right now, you know, it's a little bit more built up, and the hotels, they have hotels right there downtown, so, yeah, that stuff comes up even in negotiations. As far as rent, we, we'll have, uh, you know, event holders say that as well, you know, the hotels are a little far, and it, it, it comes up almost every conversation. And I don't have any reason to tell you that other than it's just factual, this, the sales team, some of them are here, will tell you that. Uh, I, I do think, uh, whenever that comes, it will be like really helpful, almost immediately from a selling standpoint, especially, um, for a lot of that non-sporting event, which is also what we fill in the week with. We made a real big play there of having those events, and we do events simultaneously. That was something that wasn't, I talked with Ken a lot about that, it wasn't envisioned before, but we only get so many weekends, so our goal has been, how do we maximize those weekends? And we're one, even in our company, we're one of the few facilities that will have a, a 80-team volleyball tournament and a plate of dinner going on on the other side to build over 360-some people. So yeah, it, it does come up quite often.
Thank you.
Councilman?
What's the percentage of the people who are turned away because of affordability? Some of the things that I hear, you know, when we were building the event center, we didn't want to price out our local citizens to pay for the event center. And I know we see other little, uh, venues popping up outside of Rocky Mount, which are marketing to our, uh, citizens to come to, to their event centers and, and because of their prices, maybe, uh, more affordable. How do we work with the nonprofits and our local citizens in making them feel, um?
I understand.
You know, make them feel that they are wanted there.
So, um, that's a good question, the, the majority of that 230, yeah, excuse me, 23 events were local. Um, a lot of them were nonprofits, um, from everything, from churches to organizations. We, we do work really hard, uh, to work with people, um, you know, and especially, you know, what, what, when they are local and we know they've been here. Typically, I would say, it's a very small percentage that actually gets turned away. Where a lot of the, I would say, has been a learning process for the community, and, but it's not something that was foreign to me, because of, you know, Randi Convention Center, uh, you know, I know the catering market and tourism market here. It, it breaks down in the sales process. Now, what, what is, we are consistent there, so what typically happens is you reach out and they say they want to have an event. They, if you call and say, hey, I want to have my, uh, If you call and say, hey, I want to have my nonprofit banquet on X date, then we immediately start the conversation of, you know, you know, how many people, you got to put a deposit down and that type of thing. And then we make up a proposal. So we don't make up a proposal based on, you know, that we don't know if they can pay for it or not because we don't know that until we start that process. What will happen sometimes is we'll send them that proposal because, you know, our job for, for you all is to maximize the revenue that we can. And then if sometime they'll like, you know, get shell shocked, but then we'll have a conversation there. And there are, there are, you know, parameters, I mean, especially during peak seasons, you know, if, if, and staffing is another thing that's played into it. Because if, if you're doing it on a very peak weekend that we know we're going to have this already, we, you're going to have to pay the premium rate. But like, for example, the, the event, this, this past weekend was a local, you know, nonprofit, you know, sorority event. We worked with them and negotiated with them. And so we like it to, I think the best model is to be set up to do it on a case-by-case basis because there's a lot of factors that can go into it, but we do do our best. There are some, but it's a very small percentage where, and I'll give you an example, if you're looking for, you know, say a two entree buffet for under a fifteen-dollar price point, you know, and that's a lot of the kind of, I can't compete with that adequately in a way that'll not hurt me when y'all are doing this. But, but we do try our best. Yes. And what, what we have been doing through the, we will call the city and say, hey, this is so-and-so's group, can we find a way? Or that type of thing. Or we'll push them in, you know, hey, if you do this on this day instead of this day, then we can do it. But certain things, especially like with weddings and those things on those peak weekends, that's a little harder because they're competing then with other entities for space. But I, I'll just say this last, I think a lot of it though is during the sales process where that'll, where that'll break down and they'll just get shell shocked and run away. And, and we're trying to, to be more, you know, hey, at least talk to us, tell us what your budget is and then we can see what we can do from there.
Any other questions?
Yes. The, I think we have asked several times to have a meeting along with David and SFM or SFA in reference to what you just talked about, the entertainment piece. I think we can do a lot more with that. Sometimes we get sort of hung up on some of the things with promoters. Maybe they don't understand, you know, the pricing or the initiation or what they can and cannot get versus going to someone surrounding counters and getting a better deal. But I think if in that, in that peak where we're not having the sports, that we can do more entertainment. And so I think we're best with it. So can you make that?
And, and the one thing I'll say again too, on the other entertainment pieces, especially in this market, if somebody has a, on an entertainment event, which most of the places will be either clubs or like an event hall. So their, their whole operation is different because if, if you're having a concert there, you weren't going to have that concert at PNC. We don't, we're not saying we don't want it, but there are things from security, you know, and stuff like that that adds an additional thing. And especially a big conversation that comes up is alcohol sales. We don't, like at clubs and stuff, they'll split that and that type of thing. I, I don't recommend that because all that revenue goes to the city. And, and that is, and that's where we make, you know, you know, good money, you know, for the city. But we do have conversation, what we will do, we will negotiate parking and we'll split parking with them and that kind of thing, you know, to try to meet them halfway. And we've had good conversation and seen that pick up once we started to have those talks with them.
Councilman Black.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I, I would request, and I don't know if all of us, you know, when we built this event center, you made a comment about we didn't think about the early week issues. We did. We had discussions about them. It was reflected in our pro forma, but what we have lost in transition between administrations is institutional knowledge and, and institutional goals and projections. And it's almost like, you know, we start all over again with the expectations and then we, you're always sort of moving the bar about what's a win and what is not. And so what I would like to request to keep everybody informed is that we have some type of consistent presentation from the events, from David. And I appreciate Ken, what you're doing, but what we're missing are, you know, the experiences that you are racking up every day from all those thousands and thousands of people you're seeing every month or every, every week or whatever. And it would be great, at least on a quarterly basis, wouldn't you say? To come in and hear from you about what are the wins, what are the challenges, what are some of the things that you've worked through, where you need more money, you know, and, and how do we need to shift in order to gain more opportunities? And so that's just something I think we need that presented from the people on the ground. And I'd like to add, if I got the chance to say the same thing about other major departments like the fire department, chief getting ready to walk out the door. But, you know, that we hear from those major sectors too, at least, you know, some type of consistency so we can keep up to speed and the community can hear what's taking place this way.
I appreciate that and, I'm sorry.
I, I, that's exactly what Councilman Blackwell said. It's great to see what we accomplished in twenty-two. Great recognition for the event center. It really piqued my interest in how we're going to get to cover operating expenses in three years. Like to have, share with us your, your, your goal and how you think you can get to that point.
And I was saying that if we could have that for the Imperial Center, sports complex and looking at how we can get our Imperial Center and the event center working more comprehensive together, maximizing those spaces. And so I definitely want to give a, the chief of fire and chief of police and downtown event.
And our assistant city manager works out all kinds of stuff.
All kinds of stuff. Being there this weekend and at the closing of these events, to see the massive protection down there for people who are walking to their cars and, and making it a safe entry until we do get our downtown lodging.
That's quarter, quarter, right?
And I, and I will say just to that point, we, we communicate constantly. Yes, we'll do whatever we want to do. We also communicate constantly with the city city manager, who is our client lady, her name is Mr. Varney, I don't know, and the department head. Because, and I'll just say this to wrap up, we are, we have had thousands of people now, you know, in downtown and across the community. We do get a lot of feedback that we work with them on trying to figure out how to make for a better experience. Because to give you a good example, this past weekend, that tournament director, while she was running the tournament here, was running another one in South Carolina for two hundred and twenty teams, running one in Concord and running one in Charlotte. And so we are competing with those communities. So whatever we can do to constantly increase the experience that they have in the city will help us to get to where we're, that I feel confident we can do. I go then?
Thank you.
Sir, you can't go.
Let's just start with the meeting next time.
Ken, thank you for the report and David, thank you for being with us to answer our questions. We'll surely make sure that we add this to our quarterly report in our committee, other whole meetings. If there are no further questions, we have about three minutes.
I just take one of those minutes.
Go ahead.
Very last item to send the agenda package is the designation of a voting delegate for the North Carolina League. They are, these values, they are formulating or have formulated their legislative agenda. Somebody from us to participate on that to say what, what we see as priorities. So could it be possible to designate someone? I think the Mayor Pro Tem serves already as a member of the board or maybe the district representative for the league. It seemed to me to be a natural.
Makes sense.
Point, but. I agree with Mayor Pro Tem.
All I agree is y'all get us the priority, y'all give me the priorities.
They're looking for an answer like in the next couple of days.
For priorities or just for the designation?
They're going to be voting, they're going to be voting in the next couple of weeks.
We have more than three months.
No other questions. Thank everybody for attending and thank you all for, for being here. Meeting is now adjourned.
I get to say like TJ, it's not my fault.